Oh Damon's not coming.
Well, it's a few things of order I wanna.
I just saw Damon go buy into truck when I was coming across the screen.
Well, someone should probably text him or call him.
I can call.
Um.
Tell him we need him.
I knew he was here.
He's here right now.
The jingle of his keys, I knew it was him.
All right. One other business I'd like to take care of is goes without mention, ever since I've been on this board. Um, I've had the uh, the luxury of having uh, individuals on the board that that uh, took the job seriously and no one inhibited that more than Mr. Van der Slus who is in his final meeting this evening. He is uh, he has been a civic leader in this town. He's not only in the planning board, but uh, the ZBA and and other things that the community has done. John's always been a big part of that. I just wanted to thank John for uh, like I said, I've been on the board the last fifteen years and um, he uh, he's been a great uh, board member. Um, and I think that the community should appreciate that.
It's a pleasure being on the board. I'm gonna miss it.
Thank you, John. All right, uh, Damon, I'll let you take over from here.
One other, one other thing. We want to thank that citizen petition for getting him off the board too. We really appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a wise comment that I'm getting. Make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah.
But that's a good way to start the meeting. John, it's been a pleasure, John. I'm gonna miss talking to you about West Springfield all the time.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
But I'll keep you up to date.
All right.
Hi Damon.
Sorry, he's leaving.
Yep.
Yeah, very sorry he's leaving.
Uh, wanna open the meeting?
Yeah, he already opened it, but uh, you could uh, we'll start with approving the minutes if you want to take it, uh, Damon.
The minutes are not ready.
Okay, we're not approving the minutes. They're not ready.
Okay.
Dylan and I weren't there last time and.
This uh, this keeps up. Uh, I'm gonna take the hit on this. I was asked to review and I forgot this weekend and today I just couldn't do it. I just couldn't.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get it at the next meeting. So we're gonna uh, we're gonna move on to thirty-five, thirty-seven Hastings. As long as everybody's okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna open, open the public continuation of the public hearing for special permit site plan review for thirty-five, thirty-seven Hastings Street.
Thank you. So Matt Moyne, for the record, Matt Moyne with Tetris Tech here on behalf of the applicant, Hastings Street Plaza. A quick update since we last met a few weeks back. Uh, we had an opportunity to review the peer review comments from MDM as well as the letter from the Board of Health. We have since addressed all of those outstanding comments. Uh, we appreciate the commentary and recommendations from the Board of Health ahead of our eventual filing with them. Um, and at this point, I believe we have a- addressed everything outstanding from the board, the public and their peer reviewers. Really here tonight to answer any remaining questions and engage in any further dialogue.
Maybe Jeff's not here, but I know I did read the, the email, Jack. Any questions?
Yeah, I read it. I have a question, but um, yeah, Jeff gave him a clean bill of health.
Yeah, Jeff's uh, report that.
Yeah, I read it. I read it.
All issues resolved.
Uh, Matt, would you mind giving the board an update on your last conservation commission meeting?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we were with the commission a couple of weeks ago now. Um, we've been making some good progress. We're really at this point just waiting for DEP to issue a file number to take the final steps with the commission. Uh, they had no further comments pending any feedback from DEP.
I mean, really, I mean, there's really nothing that we have to just approve our, our end anyway.
Yeah, I, I know that Bill and I've talked about this, but, but hear me out and I don't, it's not the incident here. Uh, I talked to Isabella. She felt that there was not going to be any major changes from DEP and that the conservation commission was ready to vote on it. Um, I just, you know, we shouldn't, in my opinion only, in my career, we shouldn't act and operate in silos. And we should know if they're gonna have any major changes, we'd like to know about it because otherwise we're just going around in circles.
Imagine if I was still on conservation, I would be able to tell you all that stuff.
Yeah, well.
Well, I can't be our country boy.
We come full circle to that.
Matt, Dave, sounds like that's not the case though, correct?
No, it is not, not with that. And Damon, my only other comment is I know that you guys, someone from the board, I can't remember who invited the engineer for um, the Board of Health to talk to you and I believe he's online.
Speak to that. I'm uh, Tom Victor sixteen, Emerson Street, also Board of Health. Evening. Uh, we do have our Board of Health engineer, Tom Rider online, so.
Okay, Tom.
Do you have any questions or any commentary? We had him available for you.
I mean, Tom, I guess if you have anything to, any input that would change the boards, the planning board's decision.
Well, we lost him.
I think uh, he's gone. He was.
Okay, he just dropped out when he tried to share his camera.
We did, has it, has the board have any issues?
No, at this time, no. It's just really the stuff, the thing that you saw that he presented. I mean, a lot of it will be detailed, we worked out two folks kind of working down the line. Um, the thought was that maybe have him available for tonight. Could be a help if anyone had any pointed question.
Okay, he's back.
No, he's back.
Come on.
There we go.
Hi, Tom.
There he is.
I apologize. I was only here in a little bit. My, my cable feed kept on cutting out, so I changed to a different Wi-Fi network. Hopefully that works.
I guess we're just looking to see if there was anything that you need to, any sit to any problems or anything that we need to look into that has to do with border health that would change our decision.
So, so Tom, if I did, if I may, Jay Cross, uh, there's a list of concerns that were sent from the Board of Health. I know that when they were submitted.
Okay, here.
Chance to review them and we were going to do that. You hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yeah, when, when they were submitted, we did not have a, an opportunity as a board to review the concerns from the Board of Health and that was the, the genesis for having Tom and yourself come back to the meeting today and speak to those. So if we could go through those, that would be great. Helpful. Thank you.
Sure, that, that's fine with me.
What, what, what were the concerns? Did they get addressed by the, by the applicant? Did the concerns that the Board of Health have get addressed by the applicant?
I think he's talking to you, Tom.
Yeah. Oh yeah, just, I just wanna make sure that I, I'm addressing to the chair because I, I'm not sure who's asking.
This is Damon Tenio, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Um, so I, I, I guess we looked at the application and it's more of a just a, here are the things that we see that uh, that we're gonna be, when we go through our review process, that the applicant should be prepared. Um, so I'm not sure if they addressed anything, but I, I think it will all come out during the uh, uh, when their application is for the wastewater treatment facility or septic system. Um, some of it will be probably under DEP's jurisdiction, but others might be under the Board of Health. Um, so they just needed to be aware of that. That's the, that's probably the number one is uh, of the flows. We're not quite sure um, what the total flows are, what the total facility is gonna be, and we know there's a residential complex. Uh, but if they combine with the business, that could trigger um, a DEP review. Um, right, so if it's over ten thousand gallons a day, so I'm not sure if that's been addressed, but that would be addressed through the review process.
Okay, I, I mean, and this is all, you know, ob- obviously nothing can happen here unless they have a Board of Health approval for septic water. So no matter what we do to, whether we decide to approve or disapprove tonight, it will not, this next step is water health.
Yeah, let's keep in mind each board has its own, has its own job to do. Hes it's to focus on the site plan. Um, and the special permit, um, all these other factions, the, the applicant will need to, to cross on their own. Um, I just wanna keep the board uh, focused on what our role is. And I think we've done our due diligence as a board um, to uh, to get to a point where I, I, I think, you know, warrants a motion. Um, and then we'll allow the Concom and, and the Board of Health to do their job.
Um, Damon, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Uh, to Matt, Matt, do you anticipate more than ten thousand gallons for the sewage treatment plant?
No, we do not. We're at nine thousand sixty-five gallons per day based on the proposed uses.
So that would get, in theory, as long as Tom agrees, then that would eliminate DEP from that.
Correct.
Um, Tom, do you, in your initial review, do you see anything that would change the general concept and density of the plan regarding the Board of Health's due diligence?
Um, I, I don't see, I don't see that. I just see it's more of conditionals uh, for the Board of Health, you know, as we're reviewing, you know, making sure that things are in, uh, in order as far as uh, operation and maintenance requirements and uh, so as far as any um, uh, substantial changes, I, I don't see that. Uh, but just, you know, when we go through the review process, there's gonna be, you know, uh, conditions in, 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 in the uh, in the permit.
That, that would be my only concern for both the Concom and Board of Health, and it doesn't sound like that's the case in either.
So, uh, Jay Cross, Mr. Rider, I don't know if you can hear me or not, uh, Jay Cross with the Planning Board. There was a comment about a mounding analysis being recommended due to the high groundwater. Could you, could you explain that? What that is and why it would be needed?
So is, so there's two. Uh, one is for the wastewater. Uh, if uh, if you're designed over two thousand gallons a day, uh, a mounding analysis is required. Uh, so that will just uh, that's part of their conditions as far as when they design the soil absorption system. So they need to be four feet from the estimated seasonal high groundwater plus the mounding analysis, the mounding that would occur because of the wastewater flows. So that's for the septic. Um, so when they submit their application, they'll be providing a mounding analysis for the system, just to make sure it meets uh, all the offsets. Um, and I think the other one I suggested was for the stormwater, which is uh, if you're, uh, if you have a two-foot offset, this is uh, not, not all the time it's fall, but if you're off, uh, you do a mounding analysis for the stormwater for that as well, but that's not really our trigger of review. But it was just a, just to keep up on, on the review process. I wanted to make sure that they were aware.
Uh, follow up question to that, and maybe this is for the applicant, Matt. Uh, I know in the submission package, there were uh, perk tests that were cited for twenty twenty-one, but there were tests after that. Was there a reason why you didn't select to submit with the more recent tests?
We've, we've submitted both rounds of perk tests to the Board of Health as required under Title V. So we did tests in twenty twenty-one that were submitted as part of our package. And then the tests in twenty twenty-two were in the presence of additional Board of Health members. You just confirmed the original testing information and that was filed with the Board of Health. It's
Difference between the two.
Nothing of consequence, no. Couple inches here or there, but.
Did the board have a chance to review both of those?
Hey Jay, you need to talk into the speaker, the microphone.
Did the Board of Health review both of those? Is that?
They, they will as part of our.
Twenty twenty-one and the twenty twenty-two?
Yes, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, they, they will as part of our application with the Board of Health for disposal system construction purpose. So the, the soil testing, the only requirement is we do the testing in the presence of the Board of Health. And within sixty days, we file the results. There's, there's no real review at that point until we propose a system.
Questions, Tom Victor sixteen, Emerson Street. Uh, Tom, did you have a chance to uh, review in depth the uh, perk test results from the two different dates in question?
Um, I believe I have the ones from um, last year, uh, twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-one. Um, which are rates around uh, or acceptable rates. Um, I'm not sure if I've seen them. I, well, actually I can say I have not seen the more recent ones. Uh, which I expect to have uh, decent rates as well. It's, it seems to have lonely sand, but there is a high groundwater condition that might have uh, probably um, inflated the uh, uh, rates, but um, yeah, I only have the twenty twenty-one.
Saying that the uh, folks have, that when you submit the plans, you submitted against the first set of results versus the second?
We did not submit any information relative to the soil testing for the Board of Health to the planning board. There's a reference in our narrative to the testing, but the, the results were submitted to the Board of Health as required under Title V.
Yeah, was the reference related to the, to a particular?
The date of testing, yeah. There's a reference to the date of testing.
Was that the first date or?
I believe it's the twenty twenty-one. I can double check and see if so.
I mean, and as the Board of Health has to do their job, it's like the conservation has to do their job. Conservation doesn't, they, they make a decision based on the conservation and the DEP requirements and state regulations, just like we're doing. So if the Board of Health does not pass the septic system or the water supply, then they can't do their job, whether they got an approval from the con, from the planning board or not. So this really is, doesn't have, doesn't really have any, I mean, I appreciate the, the having you guys here, but it doesn't really make it, doesn't make a decision on what we're gonna, you know. Yeah, in one way or the other.
As a, as a point of clarity, the reference in our narrative is to the twenty twenty-two testing that was performed, the most recent testing.
That's what you, that's what you're gonna be sending to them?
They have, they have both.
They have both.
They both, yeah.
All right, so I mean, I thank you, Tom, and I appreciate your input. Uh, I just feel that what the Board of Health is gonna do, they're gonna do their job. Just like, we, that's why we have different boards.
Yeah, keep in mind, you, you know, anytime the planning board approves a plan, um, they still have to meet all the other requirements of the town. Each board has its own role. I think we're getting a little bit off topic in this planning board discussion. So I think we should do, kind of reel it in and focus on, you know, we've done our due diligence with all the peer reviews that we've had. We, it appears that the project meets all our peer reviews. Uh, guidelines or opinions, um, and that uh, I think it's time uh, that uh, we make a decision that um, and I'll make a motion to approve the, the uh, the site plan, the special permit site plan review for thirty-six, thirty-seven Hastings Street.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would, to some extent respectfully disagree.
I can't hear.
Can't hear you.
I'm sucking that motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess to some extent I would, I would disagree partially with that statement because the board is making a decision without potentially all the information, and that's the genesis for the questions.
Well, it, to be honest with you, Jay, what happens at the Board of Health and, and the information that the Board of Health requires, like the perk testing and stuff, really isn't prevalent. And if we were to try to hold up a decision based on those, us waiting for those items, uh, the applicant could actually um, appeal. So we need to be careful and, 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 and follow our role. Um, we're not the overseer of the whole project. We have our piece, our pieces, the, to oversee the uh, site plan review.
Right.
Site plan review doesn't include Board, uh, the, the Board of Health items, unfortunately.
Go ahead, Jack.
I, I, you know, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with Bill and Damon, but in this instance, I don't. The point is this, we don't operate in silos and there's a reason we distribute the plans to the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission is to get their input.
Right, we just did.
There, there, but hear me out, hear me out, please. I've done this a long time in many communities. If the instance of this gentleman or, or Tom, or Dave got up and said, hey, we got some serious problems and we're gonna have to move this project around because of this and that, or the conservation, of course you shouldn't make, take action. You should wait to see till that's resolved. Now luckily, not luckily, I mean, this happens ninety-five percent of the time. Conservation and evidently the Board of Health don't have any big, huge issues that are gonna change the concept of this plan. But I don't think as a board, we should think this in this silo, silo way. I mean, it.
I don't think we've done that, Jack.
It's a, it's a, it's a invitation for a problem down the road.
Well, I think we've, I, I, I don't think we've done it at all. We've received all the input from the board.
So we have a motion and we have a second.
What their, their job is for us to make our decision.
First of all. I, I, I just, I, I, we had the conservation uh, board here, prior meeting, Board of Health here, prior meeting. We have the town, the, the Board of Health engineer, Mr. Rider on the line. Everybody that's, we're talking to is saying that there is no major issues. It's just normal septic design and approval. Just like if we were to build a house and do it, so I mean, there's.
And I agree with that one hundred percent.
Okay, so that's why, that's why we're going this route, Jack. I'm not trying to be, you know, have a side, do it, you know, keep anything a secret from anybody or go over and, and you know, go over the Board of Health or the Concom's head at all. I just, where our job is done, we've been doing, going over this many year meetings. And if the Board of Health disapproves something, then they're gonna have to figure that out. And if they have to amend the plan and come back to us, then they will have to do that. I second Bill's motion.
I already did.
Uh, Barry, Barry seconded it. Oh, I can hear him. Is there any discussion from anybody in the, in the audience?
Uh, just one point. Um, we also have a waiver request in.
Okay.
For the reduction of parking.
For the reduction of parking?
Reduction of parking of spaces up to twenty.
Need to hold on that first, Damon.
Let's, yeah. You wanna make a motion? Do we have, do we have the waiver? That was already been talked about?
Yeah.
Talked about that the last.
Your traffic engineer was fine with it.
Okay, so you wanna, do we want a motion on the table for the waiver request? I'll make a motion for the waiver request for the packing. Uh, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Second.
Five, thirty-six. Hastings. Barry seconded that. Any, is there any questions or anything, any questions from the audience, the board? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Barry, aye.
Yeah, go on, aye. Uh, now there're gonna be another motion on the table for the approval.
The approval's already been motioned and seconded.
Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Barry, aye.
Thank you.
Bill Ambrosino.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for thirty-five, thirty-seven Hastings Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Barry, aye.
Bill seconded that way.
Bill seconded it, Barry, yes.
I will draft up a decision. Um, I am gonna, I am gonna put in a section on the affordable housing to make sure that it meets the uh, the uh, state statute.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, it's just your normal uh, conditions.
Thank you. Uh, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
And thank you.
So uh, nothing, that's it.
Okay. Um, appreciate it. Appreciate it most time.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we got Fred Lapham, Shea Engineering, bond reduction for Misco Springs.
Yeah, Jake, can you say to Damon?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi Fred, how are you?
Hello, good. Uh, I'm here for any que.
Excuse me, one second, Fred. Bill, what was that?
Yeah, I said it's just over a million dollars for station nine and what, two hundred thousand for station eight?
Uh, well, the, the one million is, if that's the number you're talking about, that is for nine. And then you have to add that, to that, uh, the cost of uh, all previous numbers and so it, it comes out to one point nine four.
I got it on the screen, Bill.
Oh, all right.
That's the, I gotta. That's the re- the reduction of the bond?
Right, you're, that's the number you're voting on.
One nine four three.
One nine four three. I'm not, not sure that's a reduction. That might be an increase, but that's what the bond needs to be now currently.
Right.
Okay, so.
So I make a motion to approve a, a bond certi for one million nine hundred and forty-three thousand.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Damon, aye.
Barry, aye. Fred, will you have the forms for Dale or? Do we go through, do you have a form you use on this?
Uh, no, we, Jeff prepares these numbers.
No, no, I meant on the, I meant on the vote.
Oh, on the vote? Uh, no, I haven't, uh, we haven't added anything like that. It's just a letter for the request.
We'll, we'll draft a letter.
I mean, and I guess we have this, we have it all from Jeff right here. So.
Right, right. I'll just write a letter that the board voted and, and this is the amount. So Ellen, the clerk has it.
Right, do you, Gil, you, you have this or do you want?
Thank you, Jack.
All right, so the next order.
I get something from Jack now that I used to do myself.
Thanks, Fred.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we got, um, this is Metacomet, the plan approval. How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Rob Kneppich from Allen Engineering. With me is Lisa Mozinski of Metacomet Land Trust. And before you is an approval not required plan for a property located at one oh one North Avenue. Uh, this uh, plan shows the property that's being uh, divided or two, two parcels are being created, yes.
Can everybody here that's on the phone?
Yes.
Funny, thank you. Um, so um, this property, as I said, is one oh one North Avenue. It's on the east side of North Avenue. The total parcel area is uh, somewhere over about a hundred and fifteen acres. There's a couple of components to this. Allen Engineering was hired to do a survey of the property and uh, prepare this approval not required plan. And this is being done in the context of a conservation restriction that is being um, uh, entered into by the landowner. The landowner is uh, Ja- James and Cherry Vander Sluts. So the plan before you shows the creation of two parcels. One of them we call lot one. It has a total area of about a hundred ninety thousand, hundred ninety-seven thousand square feet. And um, it has more than enough frontage on North Avenue. And by the way, this property is in the rural residential zoning district, where as you probably know, um, uh, parcels are required to have sixty thousand square feet of area and two hundred feet of frontage. This lot one has more than enough area and frontage. The second uh, parcel we're creating is labeled parcel A, not a lot. The reason for that is because although it has more than twice the required acreage of a hundred and twenty-two, it has about a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet, sixty is required. It doesn't have sufficient frontage, so we don't wanna call that a lot, um, because that might suggest or imply that it's, it's, meets the zoning requirements. It clearly doesn't, and the plan so states. Um, sometimes, you know, uh, there, there could be a note put on the plan or that sort of thing. But in any event, there's a reason that this is being, these two parcels are being created and separated out. They're being withheld from the terms of the conservation restriction. The conservation restriction will apply, apply to the rest of the property, which is um, a hundred and sixteen acres. So, um, an application, yes.
Have you seeked relief for the frontage?
Say again?
Have you seeked relief through the ZBA for the frontage?
He doesn't need to, Bill, because the open space is not a buildable lot.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm having troubles determining, it says open. Um, I'm having troubles determining, it says open space to the left, but what's this lot right behind?
So, um, I see it's labeled open space. The, um, the gist of this is that the conservation restriction parcel, which is a substantial a hundred and sixteen acres, uh, will have its own frontage on North Avenue. But there's also an interest in the land trust who will administer this property in having other means of access to it. So that's why we've shown this, this strip along this lot. Uh, this is a strip of land between the lot and the property line. And, um, as denoted on the plan, this is open space. It's under conservation restriction. By definition, it will be, um, prohibited, there'll be prohibition on the development of that property once the survey uh, is, is endorsed by the board and the conservation restriction is entered into. So as I was starting to say, you're asked this evening to endorse this plan under the provisions of, uh, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one P. And we believe it's entitled to endorsement because the lot has more than enough frontage in area. The, the portion that's not a lot may require some future relief from the zoning board in terms of the insufficient frontage. Isn't denoted a lot, it's simply called Parcel A.
Unless they went to zoning and got relief from the frontage, but that's. That was a separate lot at one time, I believe.
What's that?
That was a separate lot at one time. I was gonna build a house there.
This, um, what type of lot? This is, this would be intended for residential development.
No, that's what he said. It's, it's his family owns the land.
Sure.
Yeah, my brother owns the land. And I was gonna build a house there back in early sixties.
Yeah, there, there is a, um, pardon me, um, the property actually, there, there is some internal property lines. You can see the dash line which we show. Um, we show them because the assessors map, we want the plan to be consistent with the, the assessors map.
I'm not guessing, I'm just saying, I know that wasn't.
Yes, um, and, and they may pursue that avenue. There may be.
That's not in the land trust, but we get, or we, we know. That's not in the land trust. You can do whatever you want with it. It, it, you sell that. How much land is, how much are you giving for the right of way on both sides?
Fifteen feet wide.
Fifteen feet?
Yes. It's foot traffic. It's not vehicular traffic.
So foot traffic, but no parking? So people are gonna park on the side of the road on North Avenue if they wanna walk in there?
Well, I mean, I'll ask Lisa to speak more to that. I, you know, as I said, there is substantial frontage on North Avenue.
Correct.
And if there was an interest in creating a small parking area, you know, I would think that would be the place for it. I don't know whether this type of property lends itself to sort of, you know, active recreation or passive. I don't know a lot about that, but yes, if there's a need for parking, there's ample space for it, put it that way.
Questions from the board, Jay? Bill, Barry, any questions on this? Jack?
I do. Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble reading this. Are we talking about Lot One?
Yes.
So that now considered.
Lot One is where the farm is now. So all the land on the backside, that was a, there was, there was a, um, it got approved at town meeting, uh, I think last November, if I'm not, I'm not mistaken. Um, and they're coming in just to clean up the lot lines.
Okay, cuz I'm looking at a lot next to the, uh, easement and it says Lot One, total square footage. I think it says a hundred and twenty-two thousand and change on the square footage.
That is, that's a Parcel A. That, that piece is not a buildable lot. It's just, it's, but it's cut out of the conservation restriction.
Is that the one we're talking about for the eighty-one P?
Yes.
So what is the name on that closer down to the road on North Ave? Cuz I can't read that.
You asking about?
I'm not sure either.
Oh, that, oh, sorry. Um, so as I said, the overall property is comprised of, I think, three parcels. And we show the interior parcels with these dash lines. So to answer your question directly, that says now formerly James and Cherry Vander Sluice, Assessors Platt five one eighty-nine, one thirteen. And there's a reference to the deed that creates that parcel. And similarly, for the two other sections of the property, there's a similar note. Thank you. Yes, that's the second parcel. And to your right, to the right, uh, no, that's in a butter, actually. There you go. Thank you very much. That's the third parcel. All around by the same people, but again, because the assessor shows, maintains these separately assessed and taxed parcels, we want the plan to be consistent with the assessor's information.
Okay, so, so will that lot be developed at some point in the future? Is that why?
So that lot was essentially combined with the section of the land to the east of it to create, uh, Parcel A.
Barry, they would have to go to zoning for frontage, really?
Yeah, that's what I, that's, that's, that's what I was saying, but Jack, Jack mentioned they didn't have to do that.
I, I meant for, for the open space piece.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah, that was my confusion too. I think we're all crossed up because of Lot One and Lot Two and.
Right.
Then everything else is open space.
Yeah, cuz it's hard to read.
Yeah, so the, the, the majority, the majority of the land.
He's carving out his house and farm from the conservation restriction.
Well, that's where the buildings are on the right.
So like, you're talking, Jack, we're approving Lot Two?
You're, you're approving the carving out of Lot One from the rest of the lot.
Okay, Lot One, all right.
Lot One, we're gonna do two separate motions, one for Lot One and one for Parcel A.
I leave that up to council.
On Parcel A.
Jack, just to be clear, um, and I apologize for the way this came about, but the plan that's on the screen, which is probably the plan you're looking at, is slightly different. Slightly different in terms of nomenclature. Originally, the lot to the, the parcel to the north, uh, we called it Lot One, but what's, was submitted today and what the board has in front of them, we've relabeled that Parcel A for the reason I mentioned. And what's shown on the screen as Lot Two is now called Lot One, cuz really, there's only one. This really, this plan really only creates a single lot that complies with the zoning bylaw. The parcel does not.
That was kind of my point, was that.
Now, that was me, Bill. I, I've got up the original email I got on this. And obviously, they amended it.
As long as we know what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, cuz I still don't see Parcel A anywhere.
All right, so now that we beat this to death, um, I'll make a motion to approve the eighty-one P for, uh, Lot well, the plan Lot One. Um, that's it.
Is there a second? I can't.
I'll second it.
Uh, Jay seconded it. Is there any questions from anybody in the audience or on, on, online? All in favor?
Barry, aye.
Okay, so now we need to make a motion for Parcel A. Cut that out as well. But I think we need to make sure that that's documented, that it's not a buildable lot. Can't be, you don't have the. Right, but I just wanna make sure that you're missing by twenty feet. I guess it just probably to make note that it is a parcel or just a piece of land, but not, it doesn't, it doesn't have the required frontage. And it's not buildable without a variance.
Correct.
Well, because of the butt's open space, it's, it, um, and open space isn't buildable. Um, my concern with this lot is it doesn't meet dimensional requirements, so in fortitude, it, it, um, it wouldn't meet the constraints of an eighty-one P.
Well, if you had not a buildable lot, it would. I mean.
Yeah, if you put not a buildable lot in there.
Yeah, it just, it's, it's got everything else but the required frontage. Correct. So whatever they, if they decide they wanna do something with it down the road, so be it. They can go, they can go to and, and seek relief from ZBA.
So we will need you to add to the plan.
They can't take the frontage in, in, at a later date because that's considered, uh, part of the, part of the, uh.
No, they have to have relief.
Oh, it's not part of the conservation restriction.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it solve it, um, uh, Rob? If you put not a buildable lot on that?
Yes, thanks, Jack. I do have a marker and it wouldn't be the first time that uh, the person who, who drafted, who signed the plan, which is me, uh, wrote on it at the meeting. So if, if, uh, if it would solve your qualms, uh, that I simply write, you know, Parcel A not to be considered a buildable lot, I'm happy to print that before you endorse it. Does that make sense, Jack?
It makes sense to me. I'll leave it up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, at this situation, what we're doing here, as long as everybody agrees. Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's an issue.
No, there isn't. I just, yes.
Okay, is that the Mylar up on the stage?
Uh, no, this is the Mylar here, so I'm gonna put everything up there. You can actually endorse everything.
Okay.
That you got, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Can I sign this or not?
I don't think so.
No, John can't sign.
Yeah.
So we'll need one of you, uh, online to come in and sign.
Linus Blue, can I use your black?
I'm gonna be.
I've been going to town on Thursday.
You need it before then.
Before Thursday?
AP.
N, okay, AP.
I see.
Okay, thank you. What's Lisa's last name?
When do you need a sign by? I don't know.
Well, as soon as possible.
I'll be back in town tomorrow, but I don't know if I'll be there before the town hall closes. No, I'm gonna be back in, in town Wednesday.
While he's doing this, we just gotta make a vote here. So we, do we have a motion on the table?
Yes, we have a motion to approve the eighty-one P.
Okay.
Yep.
Lot One, is there a second?
I seconded it.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we did, I'm sorry. We did, there was, that vote was taken. And so what are we gonna do about Parcel A?
Thought Parcel A was Lot One.
Yeah, I thought he wrote on it.
No, he said. Changed the farm to Lot One.
What happened?
I took the plan off. It was the wrong one. I got confused. That is one of the problems, having these remote me- meetings. I mean, there's very few problems, but that's the one where you can get all mixed up.
It's a pain in the butt.
But you are gonna need Barry to come in and sign that, cuz John came. Okay.
Yeah, Wednesday works.
Let's, are you gonna be around Wednesday, Gail?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so you voted on the Parcel A, the Lot One, the rest of the land that's part of the conservation restriction, do you have to vote on that?
No.
No, we're carving, we're carving this new piece out of that piece, so we only have to approve this piece.
That stands alone.
It stands alone. Now, that Lot Two, Jack, the, the thin one, um, that's already a lot currently, right? Or it's already broken away in the plan. Is that correct?
That's the way I was reading it.
Oh.
Yeah, the, 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 the piece all the way to the left. We're gonna stop using Lot A.
The, the piece all the way to the left?
Yeah.
It is made, it's larger than it was on the assessor's map. So.
Too big.
On the assessor's map, it was like twenty-two thousand square feet or something. And so they added land in the back to make it, you know, make it so it had the required, um, acreage.
Dimensional requirement for size, but not frontage.
Right.
Okay, um, boy, you guys making this difficult tonight.
Yeah, why, why didn't they just cut out enough frontage?
I don't know.
They can't.
Why?
Because the, on the right, someone owns that lot and on the left is one thirty-one North Ave, so they don't, they can't.
Oh, so they don't own it.
Well, they don't own that parcel. Howard, somebody owns it to the right and on the left is one thirty-one.
You're, you're talking about the farmhouse. I'm talking about the other piece.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Howard Phipps owns it.
I'm talking about the piece that we just voted on, Lot One.
And then you got.
There he goes. So they couldn't get enough frontage on that if they wanted to because the, the butters on either side of them, they don't own it.
Exactly.
On ZBA for relief.
Well, if, if we're calling it non, not a buildable lot, then.
That's what we put in there, on the, on the, on the Form A and everything.
So that's not an issue then?
There's not.
Right.
No, if they wanna do something down the road, that's their decision.
Anybody who looks it up on the, uh, at the registry would see not a buildable lot.
Yeah.
It's written on a lot of places, so if they don't see it, I don't know.
Well, they'd, they'd have to, uh, go for relief before they could maybe turn it back into a buildable lot.
Correct. Um, all right. You, I'll say?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. You too. Appreciate it. Got an eighty-one P for John Donat, one twelve, one fourteen Millville Street. Know that John, uh, Jack, Jack, you, you, uh, you wanna update the board?
Yeah, I can explain. Um, this is an eighty-one L, not a P.
I'm sorry, anyone else?
And this is in a circumstance when you have two buildings on one lot, which in New England happens. I've done five or six of these in my career. Um, and they exist prior to zoning, which these were built in two thousand ten. Um, your job is, or their job, if they want to separate them, is to separate them as evenly as possible, knowing that in, at least in, in Mendon, you can't have two family, uh, uh, two dwelling units on one lot. It would be non-conforming, so these were non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming. And now they will, hopefully, if you endorse this, they'll have two lots, both will be non-conforming uh, because of setbacks.
Yeah, Determination Inc. John Donat, one twelve. So this is, uh, you know where the horse farm is, on Millville Road, on that bad ass turn.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Right across the road. Just after that, on the left, there was a couple of old houses there that.
Whereabouts, whereabouts?
Just, just after Kelly's old farm, you know, the farm with the, uh, the indoor riding arena and everything?
Yeah.
Right, right on the S-turn. Just before Level Street on the left.
Oh, those, those two houses right there, right after the barn.
Yeah, um. Good evening, John Donat. Um, he had, uh, represent Determination Inc., Jason Meehan. Um, as Jack said, this isn't, not an eighty-one P, it is an approval not required plan. Um, it's an eighty-one L plan and along with Jack, I've only done, done a couple of these in my career. Um, it doesn't happen too often that you get two buildings on one lot. In this case, they were both built in nineteen thirty. Um, the pamphlet I gave you, I've included the assessor's, um, property cards that show, um, they were both single-family homes built on one lot in nineteen thirty. Um, I've also included a copy of the Mendon Form A, which to my surprise, I've done a lot of eighty-one Ps in, in town, has as, um, item number four on the Form A. The division of attractive land shown on the company plan is not a subdivision because two or more buildings, specifically number one twelve and one fourteen, buildings were standing prior to March thirty-first, nineteen fifty-four, the date when the subdivision control law first went into effect in the town of Mendon. Um, and one of this such buildings still remains, actually both still remain. Um, and they're both still lived in to this day. Um, so we've, we've, we've split the lot, um, as evenly as possible. Uh, the total lot acreage of the whole parcel is thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-four. We've created a Lot A that has seventeen thousand two hundred and one square feet. Lot B has seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-three square feet. The total frontage for the parcel is two hundred and seventy-four point nine one. We've created Lot A that has a hundred and twenty point seven zero feet, Lot B that has a hundred and fifty-four point two one feet. Um, the reason those are a little off, we tried to hold the side yard setback on.
Um, the reason those are a little off, we tried to hold the side yard setback on twelve, on one twelve with twenty feet and create the line there, so we were less non-conforming on, uh, you know, we've tried to do this as best as possible to make everything, um, less non-conforming. The lot, we, we, the, the line that it was tough was the line that comes right between the two buildings.
Yeah.
Seven feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I split that evenly, seven feet on both sides. Um, there is, uh, there's like a rounded driveway there, so one driveway will enter the lot. Actually, both curb cuts will remain the same, we'll just change the driveway coming to one fourteen a little bit. And one twelve will have the turnaround there, we'll add a turnaround to one fourteen so that they have a separate driveway. Um, uh, the only, um, really requirement of, of the, um, Eighty-One L plan is that each lot have a minimum twenty feet of frontage. We have more than enough of frontage to do that. Um, that's basically it, it, it doesn't happen too often, but it, it does, the reason they left that exception in, um, I've given you, um, the actual, um, law right from the Eighty-One exemption law, right from Mass General laws, uh, Chapter Forty-One in the thing. And I've also given you, uh, an email from Ellen when zoning was adopted. The zoning bylaws were first adopted in Mendon, which is nineteen sixty-one, but there's, actually the Subdivision Control Act went in in nineteen. Um, so I, I believe it's a pretty straightforward plan. You don't see him often, but the exception was, uh, was put into place just for, um, a case like this where you had, uh, two houses existing prior to zoning on one lot. And as Jack said, you know, it's not, you can't do a duplex on this lot, it's not big enough, it doesn't have the frontage or the area. Um, this separates them, they've already have had two separate addresses for, I don't know how long, but probably for the whole time, they were in existence from nineteen thirty as one twelve and one fourteen.
Is there any questions from anybody on the board?
Nope.
I make a motion to approve the Eighty-One L, uh, one twelve and one fourteen Millville Road.
Second.
Are there any questions from anybody in the audience? Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Bill Inverzino, aye.
Thank you very much and I'm honored that I got John's last, uh.
John's last motion.
Yeah, that's right. Well, he could close, he could adjourn the meeting.
Go ahead, take it away, John, you get it, you get to, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
I know.
All in favor?
Bye, last should be signed.
The actual, the actual one has color on it, I don't use that, it's got, it's got a yellow, it's all lined in red and blue.
Nice to see you later.
John, it was a pleasure, thank you for your time.
Alright, I'll keep the time, I just do that, so thank you.
John, I'll catch up to you, buddy.
Yep.
I'll buy you a burger at the Steakhouse.
Oh, okay, yep.
Got a Form A?
Yep.
Suits us.
Yeah, that's just, yep.
That's the plan. Next meeting?
Unless somebody's launched a, you know, a secret rating.
Oh, Eric, I heard there's like seven more hoopla. It's time to go off the floor. I don't get babies, Eric.
I've gotta stamp the same ones that they put in the box.
Yeah, I'll just stamp them.
Damon, are we done?
It was on, so.
Alright, goodnight, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, see you later. Yeah, I'll love you on Wednesday.
Okay.